I'm going to call the work set. You did it too. I'm going to call the work session for the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Present.
Counselor Weber.
Yeah.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell. Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pishanary.
Here.
We have three work session items this evening. The first one is Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee interviews. Was it true?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Yes, we have two vacant positions on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and we received two applications to fill those positions. So tonight, staff is asking interviews of those two candidates. One is here in the room and the other is online. And then following interviews, hopefully appointment of two new members to serve a three-year term starting January 1st, 2025.
Any questions? All right, I think we're ready for the first one. Hi, Brenda.
Hi.
Well, usually I ask all the questions since it's a little bit easier. Are you ready? All right. What strengths or skills would you bring to B-PAC?
So I think as far as, as I was explaining to Drew, I ride motorcycles versus driving cars more often. And so trying to, I know it's not a bicycle, but I kind of being more observant to the traffic around and trying to be more observant of where traffic is versus the bike lanes. And maybe be, bring that maybe new view on that as far as out in the Thurston area. And I have grandkids that are coming up and starting to ride. And we were actually at dinner last night talking about how they haven't had places to be able to ride down to.
How do you think work as a B-PAC Commissioner would improve the community?
As far as making it more user-friendly?
Yeah.
So making it more, you see where you can ride at certain different places and it doesn't seem consecutive through the city. And it'd be nice to go from like Thurston downtown to Springfield and be able to take my grandkids if we've got bikes to be able to go and do certain things. Right now, if I wanted to take them anywhere in Thurston, I would have to get in a car, take them to a certain location to ride anywhere safely. We'd have to cross Main Street to get to a bike path that I felt was safe enough to take them. And to make it more user-friendly that way.
If you could make one positive change to Springfield, what would it be? And it doesn't have to be B-PAC related. If you could change one thing about the city.
If, I guess I was, as I was talking to Drew, as far as making, I guess I was thinking more of the bike paths. I currently now started to work in Eugene. And I see the bike paths are, they're painted and they're more observant. You can see them better. They're painted green or blue in different areas. And it makes you look out in that area and be, like even if there's nobody there, you still see it and you want to make sure there's, you're looking out for traffic or people in those lanes.
All right. That was all the questions.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And I think it's Alan next. Do we have Alan online?
Yes, just one moment. Alan, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
There we go. Okay, I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yep. Are you ready for your first question?
Absolutely.
What strengths or skills would you bring to B-PAC?
Um, I have worked, volunteered and worked with nonprofits in our community. I also have experience on, as a board member, and then also have worked on other boards and participated in numerous public participation, public participation meetings. Also, my neighborhood group back in Portland.
And how do you think the work of B-PAC improves our community?
I think the work of B-PAC improves our community by enhancing the walkability, the bike ability and bike ability of, of the community for pedestrians, which allows us just different modes of transportation, active transportation for getting to the places we need to go, especially when they are, you know, within a close, closer proximity to where we're leaving from. Sometimes being able to walk or bike or roll is a great way to get there.
If you can make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
Um, you know, I'm going to piggyback on what I believe Brenda said, I believe that was her name, about the connectivity between the east side of the city, Thurston area and the west side where I'm in. I would love to see more bike connectivity and pedestrian connectivity in our city.
Great, great. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
So we have, we have, oh, come back, Drew. It's two openings, correct?
That's correct. We have two vacancies and two applicants.
Does anybody want to weigh in here if? Look, Corey.
I support both of them.
Okay, I'm seeing head nods. So Drew, if you want to package them up for a regular session and get them on the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Will do. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, the second set of interviews is Art Commission applicant interviews with Mindy.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. My name is Mindy Linder. I'm the staff liaison for the Springfield Arts Commission. I'm pleased to bring before you two applicants to fill our two vacancies. Staff does believe, have, has reviewed all of the applications and believe that applicants are ready for appointment, should you choose to do so. And they are both here to interview in person. We have Jane Boggs and Dave Henderson.
Thank you. Jane, you want to come on up?
Hi.
Hello, welcome. Are you ready for your couple of questions?
I am ready. Thank you.
Why are you interested in serving our? Why are you interested in serving on the Art Commission?
Yeah, great question. I'm super interested. I grew up in Springfield. I've lived here my whole life and I love the area. I love this town and I'd love the chance to get more involved in my community and especially local government. That's very appealing to me. I love art specifically. I'm a, I'm a very artistic, creative person. So it's something I'm very passionate about and that I could be very driven on.
Describe your understanding of the role you will be as serving as an Art Commissioner and how it relates to work of the council.
Yeah, totally. What I have, from the information I've gathered so far from Mindy and reading about the commission online and doing some thinking about what I would envision my role to be. I really enjoy, personally, I enjoy organizing events. I love facilitating and connecting people to opportunities. I've had a lot of volunteer work in that kind of capacity. So I would love to be involved in the organization of certain types of events to promote like art and artistic opportunities within our community. That's something that's very exciting to envision.
So I think the clarification is, could you talk more about what your role is of the, as a commissioner to the council?
Oh, my role as a commissioner to the council? Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know much, but I would imagine that the council creates a sort of structure for the commission and it's our job to follow that structure and make sure we are doing what you want us to.
But do you see his current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
Issues and challenges? Um, I would say a, a, a challenge maybe that I've heard about, that's also have experience with is getting kind of community from Eugene over into Springfield, creating exciting, engaging opportunities and events that get people from the broader area, more traffic over. And I would love to see kind of more, more pull in that area. Again, tying back to like the, my passion for organizing events and organizing people. I would love to create more connections. And I think the city of Springfield could benefit from having more community from the Eugene side of the bridge.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I believe the next interview is Dave.
Hello.
Hello. Why are you interested in serving on the Arts Commission?
I'm interested in just having a greater role in my community. I moved here with my wife about, well, to the area, the Eugene Springfield area, like eight years ago, and then we moved to Springfield almost six years ago. And I've just really wanted to get more involved in a capacity that's more relatable to my experience from the past and not just my job.
Could you describe your understanding of the role you will have as an Art Commissioner and how it relates to the council?
No. Don't remember that question on the application. In my experience with other roles that I've had that were kind of similar, it's a system of checks and balances. And we're going to have ideas that we run by the council and see if they are approved or disapproved.
Do you see his current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
I think one of the biggest challenges that I see for Springfield, as with any community, is community engagement. And I've seen arts kind of be tantamount to kind of bridging that gap within communities. I'd give the example of the Springfield Block Party as something that, it doesn't matter who you're voting for, everybody likes to throw hatchet. So, and since that's taken off, that's another reason why I kind of wanted to get involved with the Arts Commission, because I see how that power of art can bring a community together and coalesce.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have two candidates, two vacancies. Good.
I just want to thank the candidates. I, it's really exciting when we have two positions and then we have two people. I mean, it's, that's how I got started was, you know, being on committees, getting involved in that little stuff and being able to start understanding local government. And that's really, I mean, like you said, there's not much we can do at the national level or even the state level, but seeing people get involved in the local level. I really commend that. I thank you so much for being here and doing that.
All right, anybody else? Or do we have some head nods about it? Yep, good, good. All right, and we got a head nod from Mindy, so she's got the instructions. All right, for our third item, we have the Springfield Municipal Treatment Court update. And if somebody wants to wave the judge.
Evening. I apologize.
No worries. Do you want to go through the presentation first or do you want to take questions as you go?
I think questions as we go are fine and we're happy to just talk about the presentation, have a lively engagement with all the councilors.
All right, then the floor is yours. Take it away.
Okay, so we are here just a one-year review. We've had, it's not technically a one-year review because it's October. We got the grant in October and we initialized the Smart Treatment Court in February to March timeframe. And since then, we were able to get a probation officer, case manager, a whole team that we're going to discuss and wrap around about how we provide services to individuals in the city of Springfield. Just a brief recap, $900,000 ended up being 1.2 because of the city match, number of treatment courts throughout the country. And we serve all the misdemeanors in Springfield. There is a treatment court in Lane County, but they are focused primarily on felonies. So these are people that we can serve because, in at least in my experience, Lane County does not want misdemeanors. They'd rather have downward departures, which means that people who are not going to prison, therefore they're staying in the local community, receive treatment. So we have QRA's with us. We have a program coordinator. Ms. Selby's position was created and she's our Treatment Court Coordinator. She works with drafting grants, looking at all the data, putting everything in. And she put this spread, or what is this thing called? Powerpoint together because I don't know what a PowerPoint is, but when I do, it doesn't look very good. But I'm going to put that in my, my next to-dos for the council presentations. Okay, so started in January and basically we were, we already had a profile of who we were looking for. This court was looking at the younger individuals that were coming in and out of our city. That's because, as everybody knows, we had a big target theft ring. And those people, when they were coming in, you could see the sores in their faces. You could see the emaciated bodies. And we knew that they were using. So we started a dialogue, so people became more comfortable. And as soon as we were able to get the program up and running, we were able to say, hey, do you want to be part of our treatment court? So one of our first persons, this is public record, his name was Caleb Sloan. He has a number of thefts. He's already been to DOC once. He was part of that target theft ring. And him and his partner, we're doing that on a daily to weekly basis. They'd go buy, or they'd go take the Legos, they'd go sell the Legos. They would take the information, they would take the money and go buy fentanyl. So we targeted them and as we get to more and more slides, you'll be able to see the progress just those two specifically had. Right now, we have 20 and there's always more in the pipeline. So 20 over the course of six to seven months, I'm very optimistic about. It's four to five as four, three to four new people a month. We keep growing and there has been some people who have no, that are no longer with our program. But we definitely have a pipeline where we're looking at people. We're having the city prosecutor refer people to us, QRA, which is the DUI treatment provider, and other participants, as well as some officers. Typically, the biggest problem is that they're no longer, they don't show up to court. People who use methamphetamine and opioids don't have a great time, ability to focus on time. So that is the biggest problem. I think that if we had a more captive environment, which is why when people are in the jail, we're very, and we very, are very focused on going to talk to them. So we will talk about, at the end of the slideshow, some new efforts we're going to make to really talk to jail incarcerated individuals. And, all right.
On the way.
All right. So Ms. Selby's going to just talk a little bit about our participants as she is the one who receives all the data. She really looks at the numbers and how, where they come from, where they are economically, where they are sociologically and educationally.
So of those 50 individuals that we've screened since we began taking referrals in February, all of our participants are members of the Springfield and Eugene Lane County communities. They all live in Springfield or Eugene. They're committing crimes in Springfield and Eugene, but they also often grew up here and they could be your neighbor's family members. They could be people that your children know, people that you know. So we currently have, this is outdated as of last week, but we currently have nine women and nine men in our program, so 18 active participants. And we've screened close to 50, so those numbers are a little bit higher. Their ages range from 22 to 51, the median age being 31. So on the younger side, they're all at significant risk for committing new crimes or not completing less intensive dispositions such as bench probation, which all of our criminal cases are typically disposed as bench probations. They all have been screened, have moderate to severe substance use disorders. The average age of first substance use is 13 years old. The earliest person in our program was at five years old of first use. None of them began using later than the age of 18. There have been multiple previous treatment attempts and drugs such as fentanyl, methamphetamine, marijuana and alcohol are the top drugs that we're seeing in our program. Many also have high social service needs that put them at risk for recidivism, trauma, unstable or unhoused situations, less than a 12th grade education, minimal or no employment and involvement with DHS either for themselves or for their children. And these things put them at a much higher risk to continue criminal behavior.
When we look at the type of people we're really targeting, we want to target the people that are driving and have the most likelihood to harm people in our community. So DUIs are a main focus because they're getting behind a wheel and they can harm someone. So we really look at that and it's also a very easy metric because anyone who's sentenced to a DUI has to complete treatment. If they don't do that, we know that that's someone who definitely needs more help. A lot of property crimes, as I've already suggested. And then every, we have a few menacing harassment type cases. Most of the people have cases throughout Eugene and Lane County. So these are, I don't think we have any cases where it's just one isolated matter.
Many of them are also on felony probation.
So really, it's a wraparound court and these are the type of people that weren't picked up by Lane, showing that this is a very important program for our.
And that, the number of arrests prior to entry into the program is since 2013. That number becomes important as we track how we're impacting those recidivism rates. So between those 18 to 20 participants, they've been arrested 145 times in the last 10 years.
Okay, so now when we looked, when we, when I pitched this program approximately the last year, individuals who are currently in the, in our court are typically just on bench probation, which means that I am technically their probation officer. Now, I'm not going out there to check on people's addresses and seeing if they're going to employment or going to their classes. So therefore, this program is different because we have a supervised probation officer who can go knock and talk, who can make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do. When they are in the program, they have to do 13 hours of treatment, random UAs. They have to call a UA hotline every day. And there's a very structured, established program by emergence. They've been operating with the Lane County Treatment Course since 1995, I believe. And our team members have been to one and some of them have been to two national conferences. And we hope that some of the council would love to join us one of these years. It's in Orlando in May, which shouldn't be too hot, but it might be. But Disney's across the street, so there are, there are benefits to going if you have twin girls.
And I also just attended a coordinator's specific training in Oklahoma in this past month to really help us make sure that our program is meeting the best practice standards.
Okay, it's just kind of a timeline of where we're at, just to show how individuals are progressing. So we take Mr. Sloan or Ms. Wixell, the two people are in the program. They had, they're in the program and then actually they were part of the new arrest cycle. Both of those individuals were arrested. And then we re-engage them, got them back into treatment. Now they both have clean days. I think one is up to 45 and the other one's around 90.
They're pretty high, yeah.
And as you look at the people, we have a number of people that just have started to be able to provide negative UAs and move through the phases. There's five distinct phases, all of different length in the program. It shows that you have to meet increment, eat, meet incremental steps and it gives people kind of goals to go towards. So I think we're, we have some other great individuals, one individual who was reunited with his children. He's now with his three children. So there's a lot of good stories that we'd love to share with the council if you'd like to come observe us.
And also individuals now driving legally for the, maybe the first time in their life with insurance and registration. So that's also protecting the community in that way.
And what, what also this program does, it gives an outlet. Because once you have these people in this environment, they become a treatment family. They all go to group together, they get on group text messages. Hey, I want to use, they call their friends, they use their sponsors, they use their network. So it's really helping just creating a different type of network here for our people. And by doing that, peer pressure kicks in, less crime, more, more following through.
More positive outlets.
All right, when we look to, towards the future, we're up to 20 after six months. We just received a grant from DOT for 163,000. We are working with the Springfield Police for Medication Assisted Treatment in the jail, where they've just applied for a grant and I'm not taking any credit for that. That's all Springfield Police Department, excellent job working on that. And I think that grant is for 114,000 for the Springfield Jail to provide MAT. And we're working with our fund, our community partners such as DHS, who's very active Relief Nursery and others to really just provide more options. I think that with this program, we're really going to be able to help more high-risk, high-need people. And we're excited for the future.
And so we just wanted to highlight some of our current team partners. So myself and the judge for the city. Also, the prosecutor's office and our private defense attorney. We're contracting for, as you said, a dedicated probation officer from Lane County Probate and Probation, which is not something that we've ever had in our court before. So that's been a really great change. Case management, the Springfield Police Department has been very supportive in sending us an officer liaison to all of our staffings. And Officer Cardwell was also able to go to the convention with us to learn more about the policing and law enforcement side of this program. DHS has been involved with us and we just recently added a liaison for the medicated assisted treatment. And all the treatment is done through emergence. And then this week or next week, hopefully we'll have our contract with Relief Nursery finalized for part of that other new grant that we were just received.
So we are so excited for questions from councilors. I know Ms. Weber is going to.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. I'm really excited to be, this program to have been occurring on my term as a counselor and I was looking forward to hearing about the program. I do have a question though about 12-step programs within our jail. I'm a little confused as to why that doesn't occur in Springfield. I'm a volunteer with Lane County Jail and I go in and help facilitate with 12-step meetings and also participate on a hospitals and institutions board. And they have asked repeatedly, like, why did that stop during COVID? And we can never get it, we haven't been able to get it restarted again. There are many volunteers like myself that are excited and want to come in and talk to those folks so that they can see success stories of people who have stayed sober for many, many years or clean for many, many years. That may be a nice way to set the stage for them to potentially look at these type of programs as well. And so I would love an answer as to why we're not doing that anymore or if that's on the rolls to do soon.
I'm very happy to provide what I know regarding that respect. Chief Shearer and the jail sergeants, we've had discussions about that. And the jail sergeants, I think that they're still navigating that program to see if they can reinitialize it. And I've spoken to Sergeant Clance about that and I can follow up with Chief Shearer about some of the issues that occurred pre-COVID with the program. And I think that there were some problems that we would have to address prior to re-initiating. And remembering this is outside of my role, it's just what I've learned. Because I did bring this up myself, thinking it could be a good option. But it might be a sit-down between you, myself and the chief.
Yeah, that would be great because, and maybe even talking to the volunteer coordinator at Lane County that I work with, because that's who coordinates those programs. I don't see us having many issues there. I know the biggest problem is that women don't come to the meetings. There's oftentimes I've showed up and then we don't have them because the men use it as an excuse to kind of get out of their room or whatever. But for some reason, women don't participate as much. And it is males and females, obviously, for the different meetings. So I would love to be a part, you know, to be a part of that and to help maybe see about getting that going. Because it's, there are people in this community that, that want to participate and want to volunteer and would be willing to help with that program. So I would love to be a part of that.
Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to piggyback on what Counselor Doyle is saying. I am emphatically a supporter of AA meetings for folks that are incarcerated. It is a proven fact, it's a proven program that's effective. I don't know how people can expect someone that is, and as you said, Judge, that all your folks have got some addiction problems and it's either going to be drugs or alcohol. And it starts there and I don't know how we can expect, and I don't know how you can do your job without some folks coming into the jail, going to those meetings, getting their sponsors while incarcerated. So that way, when the jail door opens, they're not hit with nothing. They have a path, they have connections and they have a plan from the jail. They have a path, they have connections and they have a plan from the jail. And in, in my mind, and, and I'll just speak from past experience, I was a jail coordinator, volunteer coordinator. We held meetings, AA meetings and NA meetings every week, twice a week at the jail. And I've seen successes and I know, Judge, you're, you're just the receptor here right now. I get that. I, 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 so please don't misunderstand me as, as coming at you. I just do not see, it is, in my mind, it is inexcusable that we don't have it. And if something happened three or four years ago, pre-COVID, which was what, March of 20? And this is now, what, October 24, that we haven't resolved those issues yet blows me away. So, uh, just publicly stating, I have, I, I, frankly, I'm, I'm very, uh, I don't even know what word to use. I'm, I'm disheartened and that this not, we don't have these programs for those folks that are incarcerated. When these addictions got them there in that jail in the first place. So again, I think you could probably tell that it's very important to me. It's very important to Counselor Doyle and I think, I'll bet you if you, if you did a, a query to arrest the council, I think the rest of the council would at least have some sort of, of, uh, support there too. So anyway, thank you very much. And again, I understand your position. I understand you're not in that part of the decision-making process. But I think that you can absolutely help in supporting what you're hearing from the council tonight and bringing that forward to our administrators at the jail. I have no idea who's at the council meeting now because I can't see, but I think there's enough people there that can understand this message. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I can respond also.
Just hang on one second because I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the city manager since this is, you know, a little bit, uh, off topic from. Yeah, no, no, you, I think this question was out there, but I think it's about jail operations more than it is about court operations. And I'm hoping Nancy can kind of either weigh in or get us some more information this week about it.
I'd be happy to, Mayor and Council. I, I just wanted to check with Counselor Mo, you had your, uh, microphone on. I didn't know if you were requesting to speak first.
I'm waiting, so no, no problems. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make sure I had all the comments so I could address, um, everybody. Um, I, I think we're all in agreement that is important to provide support to people that are, um, suffering with, um, substance use disorder. I, I think we're all clear on that. Um, you know, the example, the devil is kind of a little bit in the details. My history is in counties and in, and in cities ordinarily, um, even counties sometimes struggle to provide programming because of, uh, the fluidity of the people that are incarcerated at any given time. It's, it's, um, often not, um, when I was working in Cockmas County, the average jail stay in the county jail was around 11 days. Um, now it depends, you know, it depends on any given time. So take into account that we also have, it's a municipal, um, structure. So we have a less than severity of people that we hold in our jail. Uh, it's pretty, um, unique for, to city to have this kind of asset. So, um, I think what I would like to do is talk to, uh, Judge Tierney and also, uh, the Chief Shearer and take a look at, um, you know, what the jail census looks like and what is possible given the staffing structure that we have and see if we can find a, a way to meet in the middle.
I think that would be helpful, um, and then maybe send us some more information through us, you know, a staff memo about what date you think it might get resolved by. I know that there's a little bit of planning that might go into that, but it would be nice to kind of get a, you know, at least a, a flag planted in the ground.
Will do.
Thank you. Go, go ahead.
And I ask HNI with the, that would be willing to come in and talk that had been doing it for quite a long time with Lane County. So they're not new, they're not new folks doing it.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, and then we'll go to Steve.
Thank you, thank you for your patience, Counselor Mo. Um, thank you for this. It's, it's exciting to see how far we've come in a very short amount of time and I, I just really appreciate it. And I think, um, I appreciate highlighting the community partnerships because I think that speaks to folks being able to, you know, sustain, um, their sobriety if they're connected to these other resources. One of the questions I have that's not in here, and maybe it'll take a little while to dig into, is I'm just, I'm interested in if we're making any sort of adjustments to make things more, um, like culturally accessible or because I, in terms of the demographics, you, you sort of broke them out by gender, but I'd be interested in knowing, like, do we need to have any language access? Do we have folks with disabilities or other issues that are like, you know, cross pollinating with their addiction? Um, and so I'd be curious to know if we're, if we're working towards that to just make it more, you know, available. Or if that's part of the screening.
Yeah, so our treatment provider does, um, Emergence does offer, uh, mental health therapies as well, behavioral health therapies. And so they will often screen people for co-occurred disorders, if that's something that's, um, contributing to that addiction cycle. We, I, I believe that our facility is pretty accessible to individuals with disabilities. We have, um, hearing accessibility, physical accessibility. We do have court interpreters for all of our regular hearings. So far, we haven't had anyone, um, refer to the program who is Spanish speaking or, uh, speaking of another language. Um, not to say that that's not possible, but we do have interpreters that we work with and use Language Line on a regular basis as well for, um, languages that aren't Spanish that are a little harder to get interpreters for.
Stephen. I forgot. No, no, actually, I was going to make some notes. I don't even have a pen in here. I really support your program. And then I talked to you in the hallway out there and you asked me when I've been down to see it. I haven't, I apologize. I commit myself right now to come down there soon with my, my cohort over there. You said most of the participants are local people, born and raised here. I'm really glad we're taking care of them. They're individuals. Now, there's a whole lot of problems with theft in, in the big stores. Are those organizations and those people, if they get caught out there, they don't come into this program, well, they're probably using drugs, but they don't come into this program, they're dealt with some other way.
If that person is, um, part of a drug cycle where they're committing thefts and we know that, um, and there's a, a corresponding substance abuse disorder, those people have come into the program because we want to stop this cycle.
Yeah.
Uh, the Assistant City Manager and Ms. Kemp, we're going to have a meeting with a number of, uh, local businesses to see if we can galvanize some from support for that. Because once we stop this cycle more and more, we're able to assist.
Yeah, local businesses grateful that you care because they, they don't think anybody does. But I know we do. Chief of Police and City Manager, City Manager had her finger up. I don't know what she's doing there. Let me shut up or, anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Nancy.
Counselor Mo, I was not trying to, to shush you. I, we have talked about our treatment court in our Team Springfield meetings and, uh, Judge Tierney and, um, is going to be giving a presentation to our, uh, Team Springfield group as well. Um, so we are getting the message out and I would like to also thank, um, Sub for they, um, uh, offered to give a $500, uh, contribution to the treatment court to help with, uh, um, incentives for people to, that are, uh, going through the program. So we already have buy-in even before Judge Tierney made his presentation. I just wanted to thank Sub for that.
Just. All right, Joe.
So I don't have a question. Sorry, but I do have some comments. Um, I visited the treatment court very early on as you were working through building your process and, and kind of, you know, just all the kinks and the things that went with that. Um, I was just very impressed that first day to see how passionate you and the, the whole team are about the success of the folks coming in front of you and going through this program. And then a few months later, I watched a presentation at City Club and I was so excited about the data that was being presented to our community in that, in that setting. Um, and just, I think any opportunity for you to get in front of our community members and share this, this amazing program and the successes that, that you and the teams are, are having is something that we definitely want to see more of.
Thank you. I, I didn't have any questions. Um, the work looks fantastic. Um, it, it has come together quicker than I think we all expected. And I, I do want to recognize the fact that when we were all out talking about the last jail, uh, well, public safety levy that included the jail, this was one of the conversations we as a council had consistently with this, with this community was the importance of growing our treatment options. And this is what, you know, coming through on that promise looks like. So I, I'm glad we've made the investment. This material looks great. The partnership with the PD sounds fan, you know, fantastic. And please keep up the great work.
Thank you very much. My only final comment is we, we are soliciting businesses because the incentives are really one of the key components to Treatment Court. And we have this, if, whatever you do, come visit, uh, we have a spinny wheel. Know what it's called? We have a wheel where if you're a hundred percent, you get to spin and you get a prize and it really shows the people we care. And sometimes it's movie tickets, sometimes $25, sometimes it's a Big Gulp, sometimes it's some candy. But it's showing these people that each week something matters. So, uh, we hope to look forward, we hope, we look forward to seeing everybody at Treatment Court, 3 o'clock, courtroom two.
Thursday, at three, at three.
All right, Joe.
Yeah, just a quick comment, Judge, and, and, uh, your partner in crime next to you there. I went, I went to the, the original conference with you folks and went through all the different presentations and the breakout rooms and, and looking at the processes and, uh, really how, what the best models are out there. And I got to tell you, you know, you are, you are at spot on bullseye. You're doing an amazing job. In fact, from the model that you're displaying here tonight or show tonight of who all the participants are, you're doing beyond what I saw there as a good drug court. I think you're being a, doing a great drug court. And so you're to be commended for that work because you took everything I saw to heart. And if, you know, that's been playing out, so, so good job.
Thanks, sir. All right, I think that's it for the questions. Um, I'm looking forward to the next update. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. That is our last item. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.